Coming tonight, this icy evening. Go ahead and get started. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Wes, seconded by Terry. Brian, we're ready for the vote. All right. Motion passes. I'll just take a little executive privilege to ask board members and administration and presentation just to be aware of weather tonight. And so if we can just be as strategic as possible with our comments to keep everybody getting home safely, that would be wonderful. Ashley Yvonne Fisher. Totally kidding. All right, moving on. I'll go ahead and read the mission statement. The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world. This is a time for board members to and administration to identify any items on the agenda that could be considered conflict of interest. Dr. Willard, do we have any of those tonight?
We have none to present this evening.
Thank you. All right, this is an opportunity for members of our audience to address the board concerning issues that are not on this agenda. Per the policy and my request this evening, presentation should be as brief as possible unless your extension of time is granted. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. So I have Susan and Jeff Strui and then Jeanette Gibbons is tonight. So come on up. Please remember to hit the green button on the microphone. Hi, Susan.
Hang on, oops, I'm touching on several different things tonight.
Great.
Okay, what is truth? Does it exist? Or is it an interpretation according to who? As we know it today, truth is not common. We have listened to so many untruths or lies that most people do not know what the truth really is. Some things can be considered subjective. What does one do to find out true facts? Maybe do research. In our chaotic nation today, we are living lies. And I have researched respectable people in their fields only to find or confirm that we are knee-deep in lies. There are physical, visual truths. If you experience it or see it, you believe it as truth. Sometimes our eyes can play tricks on us, or do they? Factual truths in math where there is only one answer. Absolute truths, our Creator, the way, the truth in the life, the Bible, written Word of God, Jesus Himself. God cannot lie, in reference to John 14:6. With so many lies we are living with, would you even recognize the truth? Many listen to news sources. Do they report the truth of what they see or hear? Or do they twist the words and the facts to suit themselves or are paid to report untruths because it would expose what is really going on? You take to heart what they say. Research the facts. Everyone has intentions of their own accord or always follow along to believe whatever everyone else does. We are individuals with our own minds and bodies. Do we use our God-given brain to do our own thinking? Can you discern between lies or truths, right from wrong? How do you know which is which? Right versus wrong by culture or what we think? For example, what has been going on in our nation lately? What has been exposed to our children? Deception, sexual immorality? Is this how we raise our children? Did you raise your children to know right from wrong, to be respectable and treat everyone as they want to be treated? Children are being exposed and groomed to think that being in public and exposing their bodies in sexual ways is okay, right or wrong? Are girls allowed to wear makeup at an early age? And also allowed to wear inappropriate clothing exposing too much skin? These are circumstances allowed by parents and the schools as acceptable. What happened to dress codes? Right or wrong? What are we thinking? If people want us to do something that is not right in our minds, do we go along with it even if it does or maybe harm others? If they weigh $500 in front of your face to do something that is wrong and you know it's wrong and you took the money, even if it harms a child? This child is not yours. Or if it were yours, what would you do? It's more money in your pocket. Christmas is coming. What happens to that child? Will they be able to experience Christmas? Many out there are playing God. For example, in medical clinics, they say do it or get fired. What is your choice going to be? Quitting is the best option. Do their bidding and be liable? Not who you work for, especially when you know it's wrong. What it all boils down to, the children are at risk here. It's all about the children. And you're sitting in those positions, making judgments or decisions regarding children. Do you make the decision which is, which you truthfully know what is right? So how are you going to discern if it's lie or truth, right or wrong? Will you accept the consequences? Or will you stand up and say it's wrong or a lie and do the right thing?
Thank you, Susan. Don't forget the green button. Oh, good. She's mighty.
Good afternoon. I was looking on your website under the Brookings School District core values and I came across Division 22. And it's, I guess outdated as of this past school year. It's for school years 2017 to 18 to 2021 and 2022. So and there are no current school board members on the board today when this was drafted. So I was just wondering if there was a new one that was going to be implemented. And with that, the last statement under core values is headed integrity and transparency throughout the organization. The Brookings School District values integrity by being open and transparent, consistently following school policies, trusting that administration will do what they say, establishing a climate of trust, communicating with stakeholders and making ethical decisions throughout the district. Examples include media relations, internal communications of important district functions, multiple methods and means of communications, and increased online and web-based communications in the schools and communities. These core values serve as the premise, still quoting from the website. These core values serve as the premise for the Brookings School District operational and organizational processes. The core values will serve to guide students, staff, administration, and Board of Education decisions and actions. These core values provide an essential foundation for the development of the district's strategic plan. Now, I want to go back to a statement that was put in there called making ethical decisions. Ethical is defined as pertaining to or dealing with morals or principles of morality. Incidentally, morale is just the French word for moral. So they're synonymous. Good morals and ethical decisions are synonymous. As Susan described, truth is coming from Jesus, so does good morals. Truths are good morals. Consequently, lies are bad morals. So a few weeks ago, I received an email that there was a book available at the public library downtown that was available for Mickelson Middle School kids. And it was titled Hollow. So I did a little research on what books are located in the Mickelson Middle School. I found 13 books listed under the lesbian genre, 25 under gay genre. That's not so startling. So I pulled up one of the books and it's titled Heartstopper. And it's described as this. Giant, soft-hearted Charlie Springs sits next to rugby player Nick Nelson in class one morning. A warm and intimate friendship follows and soon develops into something more for Charlie. As the two grow closer and take on the ups and downs of high school, they come to an understanding the surprising and delightful ways in which love works. Wow. These are sixth to eighth graders that have this book available to them. I can't remember when I was in school, the first time I ever thought about how love works. And yet we have a like gender-based library for the kids to just delve into. Now, when your thing states that you provide core values and essential foundation for the development of the district's strategic plan, it would be nice to have good moral books. Thank you.
Good evening, Jeanette Gibbons. I live at 1709 Dirtall Drive. And I appreciate this opportunity to come before the school board. And I really wish we were all sitting here with some lattes in hand and having a discussion rather than me just speaking, but I'll try not to.
Can bring them anytime.
Okay, anytime. I'm available, so get ahold of me.
Go ahead.
I have several topics that have come to mind today as I was looking at different information. And things are changing. We are seeing that Elon Musk is kind of shaking up the Twitter world, which is shaking up a lot of other worlds and people. He's busting out with quite a bit of information that has been kept from the public. And in the form of emails, things showing collaboration between government officials and big tech in which information was squelched. And I knew censorship was occurring very early on during the COVID pandemic. I saw it. I saw medical doctors being shut down. I saw a medical doctor in our own community shut down, reprimanded. Reprimanded, excuse me. Some big weeks from Sioux Falls that came up and had a little sit-down chat with her. And she has moved on from the big healthcare industry, even here in our local community. I mean, she's in our community but has left the big business form of it. Now censorship did not sit very well with me. My background is education. I grew up knowing by the time I was in fourth grade that I wanted to be a teacher because I had a teacher that I fell in love with, who instilled even a greater love of learning beyond what I already had. So I did. I was an educator myself for more than 20 years on SDSU campus. And my love for learning has never ended. So I've always asked questions. I've always looked at things and wondered, is this quite legitimate? I maybe need to check this out for myself, even if quite a few people are saying the same thing. I'm not a crowd follower. I'm happy to walk my own path, follow my own conscience, follow my own heart. And my heart has a very large place for children. The best interests of the children in our community is at the forefront of my thoughts and many of my actions and has been, especially since the start of COVID. And here we are coming up to the end of 2022, almost three years that we have been dealing with this. There's a lot of information that's still coming out about COVID. I don't know if you've heard about the latest Senator Ron Johnson roundtable discussion in Washington, DC that was held on December 7th, just a few days ago. Medical doctors again brought together. And if you haven't heard or seen any of that, I just went out to, I don't know if it was BitChute or Rumble last night. But if you just search for Ron Johnson and sort them by the most recent, there's anything from three hours of testimony to little two-minute clips or a very nice 10-minute summary that I shared with my husband last night and some other people that I emailed it to. The truth is coming out. And I know that we have all been caught in a web of lies. And it's very troubling, the things that have happened because of those lies. And I mean, I'm troubled even when I go out to the Brookings page and still see the COVID information. A COVID page on the Brookings School District. And we have the plan. And I'm pretty sure, I don't have firsthand knowledge of this, but how these reports maybe factor into how the S or dollars are doled out to our district. I know that money is very attractive. I know it's big money. But is it? Was it the right thing to do? And in hindsight, of course, it'll be easier to look back and say, hmm, not so good. The masks on the children for a year, the social distancing, vaccines. There's a lot of information coming out about those yet if people aren't paying attention. We know those things are wrong now. We can't change the past, but how do we go from here? And just to follow up a little bit on what Jeffrey mentioned with libraries, mine is a little bit different. I called down to the public library and I'm specifically looking for a children's book called As You Grow. As You Grow by Kirk Cameron. And it is a book for young readers. And it is a faith-based, I won't say he's directing it, you know, it's not highly religious. I think it's just some very good ways that we treat other people. So I just have a, I wasn't able to get the book, but there were just some short excerpts that I found from the book.
And I just have about 10 seconds.
Okay. So here's three very short excerpts. Sometimes love hurts, but love is always worth it. Because you've been cared for, care for others. Let's keep the children at our forefront of our thoughts of everything. A tender word is soft and it gives life like a spring rain. I'm not very fond of December rains, but that's what we get. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our best award tonight. And so I think I'll turn it over to Dr. Willard.
All right. Good evening, board members, those in the audience, those listening at home. Tonight, we are going to do our recognition. We do what's called our Bobcat Brookings Best Award. And it's something that we started about six and a half years ago or so. And it stands for Bobcats exhibiting success and triumphs. And people can nominate staff members, they can nominate students, they can nominate people in the community who are making contributions to our learners and to our system. And this evening, we have a special recognition, a nomination that was made for Mr. Zach Thomas. And Mr. Thomas is with us this evening. And so I'm just going to go ahead and read from the nomination form because I think there's some things in here that are pretty enlightening about why Mr. Thomas was nominated for this special recognition. Zach Thomas began this fall as the full-time teacher on special assignment, TOSA, in the Brookings High School office. The TOSA position is a pseudo-administrative position, which is an excellent opportunity for leaders like Zach, who's completed his master's degree, to gain some experience in educational administration while helping building-level administrators manage the flow of student behaviors, attendance, communications, and there's many other things that could be added to that list. Zach builds and maintains relationships with students by interacting with a unique blend and mix of empathy as well as approachable professionalism. Tackling attendance and low-level discipline issues is not easy, but Mr. Thomas has made it look easy with his natural ability, his calm and steady demeanor. While needing to redirect student behavior and assign consequences, students are overwhelmingly positive when talking about Mr. Thomas. They see him doing his job and forcing stuff, but only when he has to. And students further describe him, and I don't know if there's much better compliment of Mr. Thomas, as generally being a nice guy and being pretty chill. All of this is high praise, if you speak, as somebody noted in the nomination form, teenager. His dedication to the job and his I'll never give up on you approach with students have arguably been the main reason for such a positive cultural change at the high school this year and his success. Mr. Thomas is most definitely worthy of being recognized for being a Bobcat best, a Bobcat exhibiting success and triumphs. So board members, it gives me great pleasure to recognize this evening, Mr. Zach Thomas
Thank you. We're proud of you, Zach. Thanks so much. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to a presentation from the Brookings High School. I think we have Dr. Von Fisher and Mr. Stanley. You guys tell everyone who you are as well and use the green light.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. Paul Von Fisher, Brookings High School Principal.
Justin Stanley, Brookings High School Assistant Principal.
I think that somehow this weather was made for me to create some tension and make this go faster. So I will do what I can. I even mentioned it in my presentation, so you'll see. It's right here. So I'll start. Mr. Stanley's going to be talking here in a little bit and then we'll keep our eyes open. Thought we might have a special guest stepping in tonight.
Oh, okay.
We'll see. So about 399 days ago, we, well, we were here, speaking to the board, very excited about, well, basically being concerned. But that was November 8th last year. And it's, and they're right here. It was 15 minutes. I heard 50 when they talked about it, so that's on me. We discussed a cultural shift. They're both number one. They're probably all of high priority. I couldn't make that change. I'm sorry. But we discussed the cultural shift that was happening. And it wasn't a positive cultural shift. It was one that we were concerned about. It was, you know, a negative cultural shift. And then we shared with the board the direction that we were hoping to go. And so as we look at today, our goal is to briefly review the past presentation, to talk about what's happening in the present, and to take a look at the future at Brookings High School. So we will, we will do that. So we, again, if you remember what we talked about the last year, a year ago, there were some unhealthy changes that we were noting in among our student, our learner population. Attendance was down, quite a bit down, significantly down. And we've got a graph to show a little bit later. We were noticing that the academic success levels is decreasing or was decreasing. Mental health issues that we were all very aware of were increasing. And then just general respect in the building. It seemed, yeah, things were, it wasn't going in the right direction. And then this idea that we can't, we can't do education to someone, we have to do it with them. And we were, we felt as a whole staff, we're just missing that connection and then that, the partnership with our learners. And then when we think about what might be, what might have caused that, we threw out ideas, you know, what could it be? What might be the cause? Mental health is certainly a concern. We've seen that through our search survey. COVID recovery ongoing. It's hard to blame things on COVID. It's possible. What we saw in the school, I would say, was that it didn't really cause a lot of issues, but it did definitely show us issues that already had started to form or there were cracks and they increased. The ongoing effects of the changes in juvenile justice and even mandatory attendance, those things, I think, are things that took a while to reach the state of freefall. And I wouldn't say it's we're in freefall, but it just, the culture stayed for a while. And now we're seeing some changes that are concerning. And then student behaviors due to technology and social media. Is that related to mental health? And, you know, is it all connected to everything? Probably. But we're just throwing some things on the board that we think might be concerning and might have caused some of these things. This slide is without the title on top, exactly what we had in the last year. We wanted to lead the culture change rather than ride it. We didn't want to watch what happened and then, but when we noticed it and we saw what was happening, we wanted to take some, take some action. So we talked about adding an alternative option. We threw out the idea that we would like to find additional administrative support for the high school. We wanted to modernize our registration process. And I have it worded a little differently later that deals with just having our counseling staff because they're so involved in just about everything. Students coming, students going, students changing this, students deciding that, they're all involved in. And so how do we make that more fluid so students have access to our counselors when they need them? Strength in partnerships, because we're not in this alone. And working with and through other groups is terribly important as we, takes a village kind of a conversation. And then personalized learning. We realize that as attendance issues, they're probably not going to ever get back to 1950s attendance. What do we do right now when we have, you know, attendance, we have behaviors, we've got, and we realize that all our learners learn at different rates and in different ways? And how can we, how can we meet them? And then, so talking about present, you know, when we looked at those like five things, I'll talk about the first three and I'll hand it over to this gentleman on my right to finish with the other two. But personalized education, definitely something that is still very much part of our goal area. And we do have a strong core team that works with and is helping us plan the competency-based implementation that we are moving forward with. Counselor access, again, this is that piece I just talked about. How do we streamline processes to focus our time with our school counselors where we want it to be? Certainly academic progress, career planning, very important. How do we, it seems like if there are those three areas, the mental health, academics and career planning, academics has really taken a lot of space just because of how things have changed and the mental health is taking up a lot of space. And so how do we, how do we balance all that and help our counselors and our learners connect? And then partnerships, again, continuing to recognize when there's someone in our community that is walking the same way we are, how can we, how can we synergize the conversation? So I'll pass it over.
Hello there. So I'm going to talk briefly here about the Bobcat Plains Academy, which you guys all know and you've all supported. And we haven't given any sort of a formal presentation here yet. So this will be good to get some information in front of you all. At the end, we can certainly go through some other questions of it. So this began in late January, I believe it was actually January 31st of 2022. We started a few weeks after the semester, just logistical reasons and things of that nature. And we had actually 20 learners at that time. And we have Sarah Bruiser and Dan Berg, who are the teachers at the BPA. As you guys know, this is located with the, at the Boys and Girls Club, the teen center. So that's a strong partnership that we have that was mentioned earlier in the presentation by Dr. Von Fisher. And this is a supported online environment as well. So we use online curriculum with Sarah and Dan being there as facilitators. Currently, we have Dan and Sarah still working there as the educators. Teacher assistant Suzanne Clocker, who's doing a wonderful job. And Randy Hartman, who is one of our counselors, added a .3 position onto her time to work specifically at Bobcat Plains. And we have approximately 40 learners there, so 20 in one session and 20 in the other. Talk a little bit here about academics. So with this being a supported online environment, it's a highly personalized environment. The educators, Mrs. Hartman, all, the whole staff actually works with what they call personalized learning plans. And Sarah has a pretty strong background in special education. So her going through academics is, I wouldn't say easy for her, but she has a strong base. So we want our learners to accomplish at least 8% progress each day. So if we take a learner in our high school, they're going to be enrolled in usually around, you know, six classes. Take the six, maybe three credits per semester. We have a typo on there, but six classes each semester. So that 8% per day gets them on pace to do that. Now, sometimes kids come in with a bad day and maybe they make five or six, but we really strive for that 8%. And sometimes kids are getting things in the 40s, really blowing it out of the water. As of December 2nd, we had 194 total credits earned.
Classes.
Or, yeah, classes. Apologize.
That's me.
Yep. Half credit per course, of course. And then actually, I think as of maybe even today, we were in the low 200. So that is even further now. But 194, so that averages about 4.9 courses per learner. Dr. Von Fisher, credits, courses, we're getting mixed up here. So that's, that's very good. We have a point system that we're piloting right now in the second quarter with academics, attendance, behavior. So they essentially start with a pot of points. Attendance, there's, you know, if they no-show, kind of like what could happen with no-call, they would get minus points. If they get absent excuse, they get maybe. they would get minus points. If they get absent excuse, they get maybe minus one, I think is what it is. The absent excuse might be minus five. And then, of course, there's tardies if they show up late. There's some points deducted there. Behavior, there's anything from cell phones to insubordination to all kinds of other things that could account for that. And then, lastly, the academic progress. So meeting that 8% is what we want. So they can gain points, obviously, throughout the day, or they could potentially lose points, or they could stay at a, even wash for the day as well. But we're piloting that and it's going pretty well. It's actually given us some really good data to go off of. Not quite ready to share it all yet, but probably make some adjustments going into next semester with that. So on to our best recipient of the evening. So switching gears here, BHS learner support, so the TOSA position. We renamed that learner support. Some of the areas of focus that Zach has really stepped up to the plate and what we wanted him to do, and he's doing it well. Attendance, and we'll get into a graph here in just a minute about that. He's been able to really focus on attendance, and we've seen some trends that were downward. And we'll see some other trends with that. Lower-level behaviors are some things that Zach works on. Supervision has been big, just being in hallways. You'll see, if you ever happen to be in the high school, Zach's usually on the move. Being out at lunch, even just sometimes the parking lot. But he's everywhere. So the supervision piece has been great. Zach following through with students, and that's anywhere from attendance, behavior. But following up with teachers, maybe on the behavioral issues or the attendance issues. And communication with parents, and we know Zach is great with communication. So that's been really key. Well, one other thing that maybe with the attendance piece, there's been a new process started with the truancy and Dan Nelson and Amy, and working with mental health counselors as well. And that's going well, and Zach's been a key component of that team. So some numbers here, and I apologize if it's hard to read, but I can kind of go through. The blue is all August, so each year you have there. So the first year is 2016, 2017 is what we concluded.
No, 2017, 2018.
2017, okay.
So it would be the fall of 2017.
Okay, fall of 2017. So August usually starts out great. And maybe it's because it's a short month of school and it's nice weather and people want to see friends. Moving on to September, you know, that dips a little bit there into usually the 94 range. That 21 year, you can see that number is pretty low. That was the year coming back after the shutdown happened in March, I believe. And going into October, yeah, it varies, I suppose, on the year there. A few updated pieces of data that we have with this. So in '21, in November, so November's not on, yeah, we have August through October. November 95.21 was a number for '21 year. So we'll just pretend that's maybe a different color, orange or something. And this year in November, we're up to 96.47. So as you can see, with our, yeah, it's coming back. And just throwing that again out to our man in the back of the room there has been a big part of that. And as Paul alluded to earlier in the presentation, when we were here last year asking for support, we were able to thankfully get that. And thank you all for helping make that happen. Dr. Bun Fisher, you're up for the future.
Take it home. So the goals that we have, obviously, is if we have seen some really good data occurring with our Bobcat Plains Academy, we'd like to maintain it at least, possibly expand it. This is one of the, when I said we might have a special guest, we thought we might see Dan Nelson come through, and he might still come, depending on his availability. I'm not sure. But he, we would ask him at this point to step in and just talk about that a little bit. So if you see him, certainly, I don't know how it fits into the board meeting, but if he does show up, that would be neat, if he could talk a little bit too. Because he's been a vocal proponent of this as a solution, or, not a solution, a reaction, a positive proaction potentially for our learners who are struggling. Continue the learner support position. Some of the things, it's hard to separate the person from the position. Zach is great. The position is terribly helpful. And I think we just, we really just hit it out of the park when we hired that fellow. So that was good. We are anxious to kind of keep moving in that competency-based path. I think that's going to be helpful for us as we personalize education for our learners, because that will help us with, well, the learner agency that we are looking for. And one thing that we've seen over and over, we're trying to break apart, you know, what does this look like at the high school level? How do we make this work? That agency piece where students are owning the education and they walk in ready to learn and wanting to learn and hungry to know, that's when we are going to be successful. And that's something that we just need to keep working on. So goals, concerns, and celebrations, instead of cares, concerns, and celebrations. And so the concerns, you know, we're nervous about what might happen with ESAR-funded things that we brought forward. And so that's a concern of ours. I'll just throw that out. And that's something that I know that we'll work on as an ad team, and it's on our minds. We're noticing a trend that it seems learner agency might be trending the opposite way that what we'd rather see. And so we're working on that. If there's one thing that I hope to come forward next year and say, well, you know, we're making some progress, it would be this area, because this is a key to having competency-based work for us. And we're hoping that that can happen. Chicken and the egg, what comes first? Do we allow students and our learners to take that lead and then it'll increase? Or if we hand it to them, are their hands out? Or are they going to be at their side and we hand them something and it falls to the ground? We're going to, we have to work through that. Communication about what these changes look like, so that it's not miscommunicated or misunderstood. And because there's a lot of information, how do we make sure that we get the information necessary into the hands and the ears and the eyes of those who need to see it and understand it? And then we're still, we're working on, but I think we're finding some equilibrium with the increase in the staff at the high school teaching. Six out of seven, six out of eight, depending on how you look at that with our current structure. But it's, is that a concern? Sure. Is it something that we can manage? Yes, it is. We'll keep working on that. Celebrations, the cultural improvements that we've made. That's really been huge to hear our staff and our students say, wow, it's just different around the high school this year, in a positive way. Attendance has increased, as you've seen, and we hope that trend continues. We are celebrating some traction that we felt at the district level and at the building level with our staff, general understanding of competency-based instruction and what that looks like. It's exciting to see and to get a little clearer picture about what that looks like, because it's so different at any, anywhere you go to visit, it's different wherever you go. And so we have to make it ours, and you can't get there without, you know, keep on moving, keep on moving. And then some safety improvements that we've done. I put some things in board reports, and having Nate Lor involved in, and more involved than what I've had in the past with our transportation directors, has been really great. And so he's been really helpful for us. So ending with celebrations, I guess. Any questions for us, or what's our time? Can I ask?
Yeah, board members, questions for this team?
I have a question. On the attendance data that you showed, does that include Bobcat Plains Academy, or is it just from the high school?
So that includes BPA learners as well. So they're still enrolled in Brookings High School and our attendance, so yes.
And so in 2021, those numbers wouldn't show, you hadn't started it yet in August, September, October. So in 2022, those numbers that are going up may be in part that the academy is helping with attendance. So I just wanted to, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Just a quick comment on the safety protocols. You mentioned your last ad was of BHS. What about, do you follow, or is it guided by what, the location you're at now at the Boys and Girls Club? Or what safety protocols are in place there to assure the board and administrators that we have?
Good question. So they would follow the protocols of the teen center building, the physical building, of course. Anything else, of course, if there's, you know, say hypothetically, there's a lockdown at Brookings High School, or, you know, they would obviously need to be informed as well. But communication piece is always something that we're working on, and we stay in pretty close touch. I do. I probably talk to Sarah or Dan at least one, two, three times a day. So they're pretty well informed. They're still engaged with our staff and our learners. Not sure. Did you have anything more specific, Wes, that you wanted to know? Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead. I would say that as far as the funding, we have real challenges, of course, with ESAR funding. But we have on our, we were going to meet, but something came up that we didn't meet late last week. So we've got a meeting pending, and that is the ESAR, and that's on our agenda list, because this is not just this program, but it's a lot of other programs, support programs, pan-pandemic, other needs. So it's going to get front and center eventually, but it's certainly not beyond or outside the board's view of what's going on, how we can fund. And of course, it all has to do with a lot with the 23, 24 budget. Phase in some things and start working on transitioning, because when the end comes, it's going to be all of it at one time. So we have to probably figure out some transitioning plans. So it's fine that you bring it up, because it is something that I think the public needs to know, that we have resources there that will end. And we have to decide how we're going to continue some programs and other programs. We might have to find a Plan B or whatever, so.
I want to comment, thank you for your work there. And then just encourage, sort of to back up Teresa's comment, just encourage you to continue to collect the data that you're getting and presenting that to us in a way, because we're not going to argue with more kids showing up at school and more credits getting done and at-risk youth in a safe space and all those things. And so just please be mindful of that as you go on. It's not like, yeah, this is just going great, but really presenting that data to all of us in that way is just something really important in thinking through what those variables are. And then secondarily, just thank you to the Boys and Girls Club and the State's Attorney's Office, because that facility is at our use for no cost. And so it's a really great collaboration for our district and something that we really are grateful for, as well as a collaboration with the State's Attorney Office, so, thank you.
I'm just going to add to Kelly's. The data is so important, because I really believe in evidence-based decision-making. And when we have data that can support why we need to fund a program, that's exactly what we need. So I really appreciate that and thank you. Yep.
Yeah, just real quick, that point system has given us some really good, really good data. Sarah's been phenomenal at creating some data points that will be helpful moving forward.
And anecdotal stuff, I mean, I know, I just love to hear how students are feeling about it, how they're thinking about it, how they're thinking about their future, how they're feeling hopeful about next decisions and all those types of things. Those stories are really important for us too, so, thank you.
And I would just like to add too about the attendance. It's so great to see that trending upward, because I know we're not the only school in the state that's facing this issue. I've been reading articles about it all across the state. This has been a challenge since the shutdown. And so I'm just really happy to see that we are making progress in the right direction in regards to attendance. Because those other things can't be addressed if the students aren't there, the learners aren't there. So just kudos to you for that, and I really appreciate all that you are doing.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our construction manager at risk team. I'm excited for board members to spend a little time with these gentlemen. We've been working with them a lot in the facilities committee, so good to have them all here today as well. Do they have a... For length or short? Will you guys just introduce yourselves to everybody? Because we have a lot of people that watch online too. And then that green button, you just got to kind of eat that microphone. But thanks for being here tonight. We're excited to hear from you.
Yep, appreciate you having us. We're happy to be here. We're the Halsman and Clark Drew team. I don't think we've been to a meeting since you officially hired us, so we're happy to be back.
Haven't worked at all yet, so, right?
Haven't done anything.
This is, haven't done anything, so it's good to have you here.
Truly noted.
Yep. My name's Steve Teal. I've got James Drew to my right and Pierce Coke to my left. So yeah, to Kelly's point, really our role to this point's been attending the design meetings that have been occurring every couple of weeks. Really, our role is to work closely with your architect and your school group to make sure that the designs stay within budget and just to keep you apprised of what the changing design looks like in terms of cost. Another part of our role is schedule, as we're working through this. We're working on developing a critical path schedule for the construction portion of the project, which as of now is still on track to start next spring and be completed early in the fall of 2024. So I guess just wanted to be available tonight to talk about that a little bit and also address any questions. We have a sub-GMP for each of the different schools on the agenda tonight, so wanted to be able to answer questions about that if you had any, and also any other questions about the process.
I just want to, yeah, go ahead.
I have one question. I think this was probably shared, and I couldn't recall it. Someone in the community asked me, I live in the Hillcrest neighborhood. Are the trees going to be destroyed? That's what I was asked. And I said, you know, I think that was shared, but I can't recall. Are we going to save the trees on 17th and 3rd?
I can't specifically remember the answer to that question. Easily something we could figure out, but I don't recall for sure.
I think on our design, and we have Shannon on the back. I think on our design, the trees on 17th and the trees on 3rd, well, it would remain. But that big beautiful tree in the center of the park is one that we'll have to go. And but then the trees, like on 15th, those all pretty much remain too. So just some of those trees in the park area, but, but yeah, so we'll.
Question I was asking.
We don't have a lot of trees, and that's similar at Midary. Chris Grunhagen has been a huge tree advocate at Midary. And so don't worry, trees have been definitely a point of topic in keeping as many as possible. And then replanting as well, some of those items too, so.
I'm just glad to hear that we're still on track, because, you know, that's very comforting to hear.
Will you guys explain a little bit of the sub-GMP and how that's sort of helping us stay on track? And then the importance of its approval tonight?
You bet, you bet. Yeah, in terms of schedule, that's a huge piece. One of the benefits of having a construction manager at risk is we can bid things as the design's ready to bid certain things. We don't have to wait for the design to be 100% completed. So sub-GMP 1 is a good example of that. I'm sure everybody's dealing with supply chain issues in the world in some fashion. So sub-GMP is helping us to address that with the procurement of precast concrete panels, which are going to be used at the gyms for each of the new elementary schools. It takes about six to eight months right now to get precast. So by getting the sub-GMP approved tonight, that allows us to get that bid out, get the suppliers hired, and get in the queue so that stuff's ready to deliver next summer when we're ready to install it. So we're working through schedule, but I suspect there could be one more sub-GMP that we present to you all and ask for approval on sometime early next year. But more to come on that. But yeah, to Kelly's point, it's important that we get approval on these items tonight so that we can order that on time, so that we can build the projects on time.
We're all tracking packages now to be sure they're here for Christmas, so I kind of can relate to that.
Sort of the same thing, yep.
Will you guys touch on this, sort of that your team will be Will you guys touch on this sort of that your team will be in charge of the safety of the site while we're building a building and then having a building still open and all those kinds of things? And just talk a little bit about some of the planning you've done from that aspect?
Sure, yep. So we, we transitioned from keeping a finger on budget and schedule through pre-construction to actually more or less functioning as a general contractor on site. So we'll, we'll have a team assigned to each, each project to be there to supervise safety first and foremost, quality and schedule. So we'll, we've, we've got a preliminary, what we would call site logistics plan for each site that'll evolve with the design, just to make sure it's current or work closely with administration, the site principals, just to make sure our fence is in the right spot and that safe egress and access and those sorts of things are top of mind for students and staff, that bus access, student drop off, that kind of stuff works well. And I'm sure that'll be a daily conversation, just to make sure it's current and evolving the way that it needs to.
Wes, any additional?
Did you come up from Nebraska tonight or you're going to, do you have to go back?
He's going to.
I'll have to go back at some point, probably tomorrow.
I'll let you know the best places to eat and drink in Brookings, okay? Clint, do you have any additional items that you would like the group to touch on?
Um, no, I, I just would like to share with the board what an incredible pleasure it's been working with these gentlemen. I appreciate the attention to detail, the, the attention to creating a master timeline that, that really helps ensure, to your point, Teresa, that we're staying on track because that is what the expectation is of our community and our principals and everybody else that's experienced construction projects. And I think the other fact that I'd just like to point out is how they are really doing what we expect them to do in terms of being that owner advocate through this process. So it's, it's been a very, very positive relationship and look forward to it going forward. And I did want to make certain that you brought up the other sub G M P and how we're moving forward again to ensure that we have the procurement of materials and we're in the queue, if you will, for those providers, because I know that was a concern early on, that there are limited providers that, that provide precast or that provide that structural steel. So they're obviously doing their due diligence on our behalf. So again, thank you all for doing what you're doing, really appreciate it. And during some of those long meetings where we get into all the finite details, but certainly really do appreciate that attention. So thank you.
And also I got a message from Shannon that there is working on a plan to, to save that tree. So I might have been incorrect on that. So we'll, we'll stay tuned. There doesn't need to be a Hillcrest neighborhood mutiny yet, so.
That's what Steve's going to do tonight while he's still in Brookings, he's going to get together with Shannon and figure that out.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, some tree plans. Oh, very good, very good. Okay, sort of save the tree.
Without getting too much into the construction committee report.
Yep.
First of all, thank you, Pierce, you've been at the meetings and you assured me that you're sharpening the pencil in every juncture.
That's right, Wes, yeah.
But I, I, I think I want to point out that, you know, the comments earlier about safety during construction, because what more curious person could you find than a, an elementary student, particularly lower grades, they'll figure out how to access things. And so I'm, I'm glad to hear you focusing on that on day one. It's important. You go ahead and comment and I want to finish up.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I, we did talk about this in our interview and I just, I want to bring it up again, just so everybody knows it wasn't a sales pitch on the, on the day of, but especially with elementary schools, we're well aware there's a lot of curious kids out there. So I mean, we definitely are committed and plan to work with your staff to find good opportunities to involve those kids. It might not always be inside of the fence, it might be outside of the fence, but we know they're curious and we want to take advantage of the opportunity to hopefully teach them something about what we're doing. So hopefully we can address the curiosity in a productive way at certain milestones.
I would, I would encourage you to, to work with some of those kids from the Bobcat Academy too, to help them see what a future career might be like for some of them, because I think that's what they need is they need to know, I've got a hope for a future that I could have a career that I will enjoy, that I like. So hopefully you can meet with these two guys back here and maybe work something out for some of those kids too.
Yeah, great suggestion.
And then of course, the project like this is segmented quite a bit from whether the budget and the timeline, whatever else, and the most recent segment has been safety as we work through and assure we're parking and in fact, we had a discussion this morning on, on the very issue of safety for students and staff and whatever all that entails. And we'll continue with that because it is certainly on the public's mind relative to how these schools will, will be managed and, and the safety of our, of our children. So I just want to emphasize that, that that's one of the segments, the most recent segment, and we probably won't leave that one, but there'll be more things emerging, including the budget. Tonight's approval is like a $2 million gig, so we're, we'll be mindful of the budget, so.
Any other questions, board members? Clint or Brian? Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, we're going to go and move on to our communication discussion items. Whoops, I'm sorry. The performance oversight committee.
We did meet.
Yeah, we met.
Terry and I met with Shan, with Michelle and Hannah. And we learned about some of the things that are happening in terms of our assessment results and they'll be reporting back to us. But that's an area we're going to have to dig into too and do some work. So when we hear more from Hannah and Michelle, we'll share that with you.
All right. Facilities and construction committee, I think we're updated. Yep.
I said my, my speech.
Perfect. Nope, I think we're updated. Continuing to meet on a very frequent, once if not twice a week basis, continuing meetings with the city, continuing meetings with our construction manager, architect. Architects have been at Hillcrest and Midary and their team have been working with our staff and teachers, working on casework and interiors and all of those things. So just kind of a full-time press right now. So just appreciate our staffs and our team and our administrators' time and facilities' committees' time because it's been, it's a full press, but it's getting really exciting. All right, policy and governance.
We haven't met, but is there?
We're on this, we're on this schedule for later this week.
Yes, yes, we'll meet and there were several policies that we'll be working on, but we haven't met yet.
Okay. School, school finance committee?
I basically gave my report a few minutes ago. We're, we're looking at the agenda and looking at 20, including the policies overriding issues, 5% governor's recommendation. If legislature can carry that out, that'll be huge for us. So at least we can plan at this juncture for fiscal '23, '24. So we'll meet, we'll, we'll meet soon. Last week's been, will be, is pushed off for a few days.
Yeah, I apologize, I was not able to get to the meeting Friday. I was sleeping on the airport floor in Minneapolis.
Oh, no.
But anyway, we'll get it.
The one of many weather.
It'll be me next time, that's the way it likes.
All right, mental health coalition?
Uh, we did not meet the month of December.
All right, any other general board communication items?
I think the policy or the performance oversight committee has another thing that they could share that they were part of, the insurance committee work that they did.
Yep, it's coming out.
Yeah, it's coming out, but I think it's also, yeah, that's a great one to mention.
Absolutely.
We're excited about that. Okay, good.
The only thing I would share is I, I did have the opportunity to serve as the facilitator for the regional F C C L A meeting last week. And Brookings, of course, did an awesome job. Emily Huwa was the regional president and she'll be the state president as well at our state F C C L A meeting in April. But it was very well organized, very well planned, everything went very smoothly. And Brookings also has an officer for next year. Kate Christensen will be the vice president for the regional district next, next year. And he did an awesome job. I got to sit in on all the interviews. So just a shout out to our Brookings High School students involved in F C C L A and middle school students, there were a lot of middle school kids there too. So it was fun. And also I want to share with the board that we have been invited for a sing-along this Friday at Dakota Prairie.
Oh, gosh.
So I'm planning on going if any of the rest of you would like to attend. Wes, I can pick you up if you want to come for the sing-along.
I was not in honors choir, but I think you were.
What, Terry?
More time.
Kelsey did, Kelsey just said to be there like at eight, eight, eight thirty and they're going to go down the hallways and do a sing-along. So I said I would extend that invitation to.
I'll be traveling, so you, excuse me, I'll be traveling, so I'm, I'm going to pass the pass.
All right.
And thank you, Deb, for all the work you do with F C C L A. I know it's, it's great. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the administrative reports, we're going to have the superintendent share information about the month and highlight items on our other reports.
All right, so I'll move through relatively quickly just out of sake of time, but certainly some things worth mentioning, board members. First of all, we wanted to highlight the Sand Creek relationship that we have. That's our employee assistance program. And one of the things that we had started last year, we did what we called Culture Club. It was staff representatives from all the buildings. And one of the things that came as feedback to me in the central office was we need to do a little bit more to promote what we're doing with Sand Creek and just building awareness across the district. So you can see an example of what we did attached to the report and it's been well received. And I think it's one of those things that adds to our overall wellness plan that we have as a district that contributes to what we're going to talk about later on with health insurance. So again, just wanted to make all the board members aware of how we are working to promote our employee assistance program. The strategic planning, we know that that's been going on in earnest. We have identified or landed on four pillars and now the work will begin to start building some metrics underneath those. The four pillars are Brookings School District is a great place to learn, a great place to work, a great place to collaborate and a school district of excellence. And as you heard the presentations this evening, I think you see some examples of that coming to life and the relationship, for example, with the Boys and Girls Club and some of the things that we're doing there. The governor's address certainly would be remiss if I didn't mention that we're, we're thankful for the 5%. We know that that is less than inflation, but again, we also know that the state has a lot of other obligations as well. So we'll see how that all comes forward in, in the process and working with our local elected officials. At the high school level, you can see a number of items that were highlighted. I don't want to spend too much time dwelling on some things that were already talked about in the presentation. Certainly the highlight of the engaging activities at Brookings High School, being caught in the act of engagement, if you will, some neat pictures there. And then again, adding to the culture, the birthday celebrations that are being part of the recognition at the high school. And, and I think regardless, if you're an elementary learner, if you're a high school learner, it's always fun to be recognized on those birthdays. The middle.
Stop you real quick, Clint, sorry. I was just going to wonder if you would mention the monies for the Bobcat Plains Academy?
Oh, certainly, yes.
Because I think I was meaning to bring that up when they were mentioning, but I think that's worth mentioning based on the ESSER funding, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely. Could have been part of the presentation earlier or mentioned other places, but we are very fortunate that because the county has, I believe their forfeited bond funds that they have available, the county commission at the recommendation of Dan Nelson, our state's attorney, has graciously agreed to donate over $40,000 to the Bobcat Plains Academy for our work that's going on there. And while we know that, that that's, that's not a huge, relatively speaking, sum of money, it's a significant amount of money that can help out with programs and opportunities that we have relative to the work that we're doing with our learners, with the online programming, some other things that have been identified as opportunities in that program. So again, we're super excited about that. I've had an opportunity to thank Dan personally, and if any of you see Dan, I would hope that you would do that as well because he, he really stepped forward and, and what's been interesting too, if I can take a little more liberty with that, is when Dan has spoken at the state level through the juvenile justice discussions, he has talked about our model that we've built with the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. The state's attorney's office in the school district does really one of those best practices in the state. And I appreciate him being a strong advocate and recognizing that work and the partnerships and the collaboration. I'm delighted to say that we're partners in this process together and, and that shared vision to figure out what we can do to make a difference for kids. And that's, that's what we've done, so.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
No, thank you, thank you.
You're doing, you're on a roll too.
Yes, we're moving right along. So, all right, middle school. Again, you have these unique opportunities to interact with staff and learners in different ways. And honestly, it moved me to tears when I had the opportunity to speak on behalf of Stephanie Ballard being recognized for a Horace Mann Award. The N E A Foundation has identified, they released the five finalists in November and Stephanie Ballard was one of those five finalists. And I was asked to participate, it was a Zoom announcement. I was asked to help present in that. And like I said, it absolutely moved me to tears to speak on behalf of her and what she represents in our district, in our state, and now ultimately, as you see in our country. So we're really excited for her. She's one of five educators to be recognized as a teacher of excellence, N E A salute, education gala in Washington, D.C. this May. So we're super excited for her. So again, if you see Stephanie, congratulate her. We know that the teacher of the year accolades certainly were well deserved, as is this. Wax museum, again, that's just a fun thing that happens every year. You can see some pictures in recognition of that and then continuing with recognition of learners. We have a learner that is part of the governor's student art competition in Pier. And our entire art program, as you know, across the district is just phenomenal. We've been state champions in arts for a number of years. And again, it starts young and continues. And we wish Ava the very best, Ava Folenkamp, as she presents her art piece in the governor's student art competition in Pier. So that's really exciting to see as well. Moving into the report for Camelot, you can see some various pictures for educator for a day. I know that was mentioned previously. Some of us were able to participate in that and have an opportunity to showcase some of those things that are passions beyond our work that we do. And you can see again, a wide number of individuals across our community came in and served in that function. The enthusiasm of our learners to see some different ways that the learning impacts career paths is something that is really exciting to do. And again, speaks to that pillar that we just mentioned, a great place to collaborate. We've done this for a number of years and credit to the teachers that helped coordinate it and that invite all these guests in and, and then the whole school district for taking that opportunity, whether you're a, a member of our community somewhere or a member of our school community somewhere, presenting is just a, a great way to connect with youth. 96% attendance at conferences at Camelot, certainly that's something we're proud of. We always strive for a hundred percent and we work very hard to reach out to parents and schedule those. So again, that's just something that, looking at data, again, we, we try to use that data to help guide what we can do better and make some improvements. Professional learning communities, the P L C, you saw that referenced in the report coming from Dakota Prairie. And our community, professional learning communities at Dakota Prairie using some great alike teams, working on some things relative to instructional strategies and planning and preparation. And it really comes down to how they can utilize some small group instruction to meet individual learner needs. And then you can see that they participated in the Great Crunch Off. So if you didn't get the note, I, no, I didn't, but now you see that was an opportunity for maybe next year. The Hillcrest administrative report, you can see some references and again, something that we've talked about before, the Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Program and the reference to the Bobcat Bs, the words being respectful, being responsible, being safe and being an active learner. We are, we've started embracing a program to help track our progress with that. We're utilizing that data then to make decisions and help make some informed decisions on where we need to make some changes with programming or functions or processes. But you can see with what they are utilizing, the, the point system to help recognize learners that are embracing the Bobcat Bs. And then reaching out again with the collaboration side within the, the building, Billy Jo Meyer, third grade teacher, she's a class, their classroom won the naming contest for the new city of Brookings Trash Compactor.
Awesome.
Sir Crush-a-Lot. And there's, there was a fun little recognition there. And then there was a Bobcat Best nomination that was shared under my administrative report, but it speaks to what happened. For those of you that, that took your thespian career on the road with me and participated in the Good Night Gorilla event, it was such a fun evening. We had over 150 attendees and, and I really applaud the Hillcrest staff for putting together that event. And, and you just don't know what you're going to get on evening activities. And it was so fun that night to stand at the door and watch the learners and their parents pour into the school and, and then participate in that evening and culminated with some cookies and hot chocolate. So what a great way to end. Midary report, you can see that there was a little fun to be had there and a little pre-Thanksgiving activity, some turkey bowling. And I know all of our buildings had some different festivities and activities that took. And I know all of our buildings had some different festivities and activities that took place. So again, just trying to emphasize the culture piece and the great place to work component. And then you notice the outreach, and I'll mention it here, but it was mentioned in other reports as well. This is the second year in a row that we've actually had school in session on Veterans Day. And we made that intentional decision after we surveyed community. We gathered some feedback, we gathered some input. So we were making an informed decision. And that feedback pointed to the value of us having school in session during Veterans Day. So again, utilizing that data and that information, we've now held it the second year, and it has been received overwhelmingly well and positive. And I really appreciate the work our principals and teachers have done to support and recognize veterans through Veterans Day programming and activities. The Director of Curriculum and Instruction Report. We had several teachers and administrators attend the recent, relatively speaking, Board of Education meeting down in Sioux Falls. There was testimony that was presented, and several of our staff members presented, making some references about different things that are missing in the standards or that might need to be improved in the standards. In particular, I would say that our staff did an exemplary job of highlighting the need for increased geography standards, that there's a big gap in geography. And so again, I hope that makes a difference. There will be a meeting coming up. I didn't include that date. We'll do that in the January report. That meeting is going to be held in PEAR in February on a Saturday. And I think it's going to be absolutely important that individuals show up if they care to talk about the needs and the standards. So again, we just encourage people to be aware of that and be engaged. And then we're planning right now for the January 3rd In-Service Day that staff will participate in. As you may recall, we added an additional, two additional staff development days. One of those will be January 3rd. And we're doing a mini workshop conference type style. And it'll really focus on some key areas in the system, mental health, some self-care for our staff, technology, and then of course, some academic topics as well, looking at some of the math work that we're doing, et cetera. The Director of Special Services. We have reached our important date for count there. As you can see, we have a growing special needs population in our school district. And that's not unique to us. You can see that in 2021, we had 595 students receive special education services. And our estimate, as we're finalizing that, and I say estimate because we still are finalizing the final edits of everything, but it appears that we will be 659 learners. So again, we know that those program needs are significant and they're important. And that's not including, as you see, the 26 open evaluations that we have, so in process. And then you'll notice there's a point in the end of the report talking about some future programming needs. And we're very proud of a lot of the work that we're doing in many of our programs related to social emotional work, autism spectrum, behavior supports. And we're constantly seeking opportunities to augment and improve some of those things. We're talking about some improvement with transitional programming for our learners ages 18 to 21 and looking at some other things that we can do that really address some of the behavior programming needs that we have. One of the things that's becoming more and more complex is the opportunity or lack thereof for alternative placements for learners. So we are talking about different things that we might do programmatically that can serve not only our needs, but possibly some regional needs as well. So just know that we're dedicated and continuing to look at how we can best serve the needs of our special needs population. The Director of Activities Program. A lot of information in there. Again, back to some points of data that I think are relevant and important to note. This fall, we had 139 girls and 142 boys participate in VHS sports teams. And then we have 408 girls and 271 boys participate in the Fine Arts Program. And 123 learners were involved in various clubs and organizations throughout the fall. So we have a very active student body. Certainly, our goal is to have every learner have a student activity that they can participate in because when students participate in those activities, it has a direct correlation from all the research and data that you gather, a direct correlation to student engagement. And then the other thing that's really important, I think, is worth recognizing and highlighting, our 13 sanctioned high school activities. First quarter GPA was a remarkable 3.67. So that is really an incredible feat. 34 students received All-State honors, 26 academic All-State honors, and seven All-ESD awards. So many recognitions. And then, as I said, you can read through and see the various things that are going on activity-wise and a ton of activities, obviously. Child Nutrition Report. There's a couple of things to, we're continually promoting and encouraging individuals and families to complete applications for free and reduced meals. We know across the state and across the country, there's been a great deal of discussion recently about what's going on with meals in arrears. Just as a reminder to the board and to the community, if a family applies and they qualify for a reduced or a free meal, we provide those meals free and reduced. So the reduced are even free. We have a process, it's completely confidential. We encourage families to complete that process, to fill out the form, to fill out the paperwork. It doesn't cost the district anything. In fact, it helps us with federal funding, particularly federal title funding. So again, we encourage people to do that. We do have a pretty robust process of working with families if they do have negative balances. It includes phone calls, emails, letters, reaching out. And we do continue to provide and feed meals to those families and those learners that are in negative balances. The only thing that we prevent is the purchase of à la cartes. But otherwise, they are receiving the full and complete meal. I know that that was some talk across some news stories that came out recently, and that's not an issue for the Brookings School District. So just want to affirm that for individuals that have asked me that question. And we continue to have the Food for Thought Funds available for assistance if individuals are interested in contributing to help with balances that may be outstanding. We know that this is always a season of giving. People can contact the Child Nutrition Department or the district office and certainly work through that if they're interested in making a donation because we are committed to feeding learners because they are needing those things in the first place. So moving on to the Director of Instructional Technology, you can see that there's going to be a bunch of tech work that occurs over the winter break. So certainly some welcomed opportunity with a little longer break this year. And then the other point that I wanted to share is you can see that we're starting to spotlight some of the work that is going on within our tech department with our teachers. Brad Newpen doing some things to really embrace Project Lead the Way with digital electronics and some intro to engineering things that fit with some of the career pathways and C T programming that we have going on in the district. So watch for future updates as well on tech spotlights. And then some information about our transportation through our Director of Transportation Buildings and Grounds. We have over 500 rural route learners. So I know when we have weather like we do now, some ask, well, does the Brookings District need to really be concerned about learners outside the city proper? And as a point of equity, we do. That's the 500 that we need to be mindful of. And you'd be amazed, I do get that question. Well, can't we just have school anyway? Well, we got to think of them all. And then you can see that we have early childhood education, some special education and project skills work that we have 120 learners riding there, 250 Boys and Girls Club learners, 50 gap learners. So needless to say, our buses are used a ton. And we do transport, as you can see as well, between 35 to 60 boys and girls, basketball athletes that go from the middle school to the Fifth Street Gym. So the other thing I wanted to highlight, because I know there's been questions about where are we at with bus drivers? We're continuing to advertise, we've done outreach, we're at job fairs, we go to career fairs at the university. We continue to post. And one of the things that we have started to do is, again, to help streamline the process. Our district recently was approved as an accredited provider for the behind-the-wheel portion for training. And that should help along with some of the online CDL training that's available to streamline that process for anybody interested in obtaining their CDL. So again, we're doing these things to utilize processes that reduce costs for those that have an interest in driving bus. And again, being, trying to be very strategic in what we're doing with those efforts as we're working forward. So I appreciate Nate taking the bull by the horns, if you will, and seizing that opportunity to be one of the few districts in the state that really takes advantage of that opportunity. Director of Business Services. You can see that there's some things. I know there's been some themes or discussions about safety. As a reminder, board members, every school campus has gone through a thorough review with the Brookings Police Department, looking at some safety and security enhancements. Over the last several months, we've shared in board reports how we've updated and made strategic investments with our dollars that we have in our capital outlay fund to address some of those safety and security concerns. And we're doing so at the high school. As you see, we're rekeying a number of locks at the high school to the tune of just about $21,000. But that is, there are 350 doors that need some cores replaced. And partly that's because when you go to lock the doors, they may have had the old push button. And part of what we're doing in the Alice Training is you push materials against the door to barricade, and just the tap of that door handle opens the door. So we've been working hard to address some of those things, and we continue to make efforts to address safety and security in our buildings. So again, I really appreciate the work that our team has done there. Through the Pre-K 5 Report on Curriculum and Instruction, as was referenced before, there's some work going on going with the reimagining education models, colloquium work. And we are continuing to make efforts and really concerted efforts on how we move forward with the competency-based programming. And then we are working with the state on some accreditation feedback that we've had. We just had a brief report on some things that we need to tweak or finalize with accreditation. And we have, I believe, till February to submit those final updates. And then it'll be the final review and adoption for accreditation. And that really is all I wanted to highlight. So certainly would stand ready for any questions.
I just want to thank all the administrators and for their board reports. I do read them through end to end. And I'm glad that we highlight some of those things as well. I guess I have a couple of questions that might go back to the superintendent's report. The one, what's the next steps in the strategic plan? And who actually works on those? You mentioned setting the markers and the measurements. What happens with that next?
Yeah, great question. So Casey Belhovjak, our facilitator, actually reached out to me, I believe, yesterday. And we have a meeting that we're working on scheduling into January where we'll revisit the pillars and make certain everybody, because now they've been out in the community a little bit, and generate some discussion. And then we have our discussion about how do we go about filling in the metrics? And one of the things that she has posed as a question is the involvement of staff and board members. I envision we would do both. We have something that we started, I believe, seven years ago, the District-wide Continuous Improvement Leadership Team, which has representatives from every single building, teacher leaders, administrators. And I envision that that will be their work, that that group will be absolutely instrumentally involved with that effort.
I'd definitely be interested in working on that. One other question in your report, you had the seven design steps for the competency-based education. And I'm just wondering, is there any more of a concrete playbook that we're moving toward to really see something? I mean, I've seen a lot in writing, but to see something really concretely, you know, what do, if I'm a teacher, what do I do next? Or where am I at? Can you expand on that?
That's a great question. And actually, that's part of what is being developed, is a playbook that lays out. And we had started that through the colloquium. I know Deb was aware of that because she was part of those discussions through the R E M and how we were working on that. And as was referenced by Dr. Von Fisher, one of the things that we know is it looks different everywhere that we go. So we are working on those steps next with our colloquium group. Our teachers have been part of that process. We took feedback from every building, every staff member. We narrowed that down and winnowed it down. So that's all being developed into this playbook document. So yes, there is something that's being compiled.
And is there a timeline for when we can see that getting put out there?
I believe that was part of the superintendent goals, that we would work to have something later this spring. So yeah, yep.
And just to follow, oh, sorry, just to follow up. So then, do the teachers know this is coming? I mean, so are they all out there going, when is a, what am I supposed to do? Is there something, they are all aware?
Yes, yes. We've done a lot of communication, sharing out through staff meetings with each of the principals when they meet with their staff. Our colloquium group has been asked to share as well. Through the Bobcat Buzz, which is a monthly newsletter that I put together, we share as well. So there have been many different ways that we've tried to communicate that out. And one of the things that very tangibly we've done this year, you can visit classrooms and see the Habits of Mind poster, the 16 Habits of Mind. And we're being very intentional about talking about those habits of mind and how those are part of what we do as part of the overall framework of what we're doing with the R E M colloquium work.
Going to comment too, that once we got to those pillars, those, you know, sub-points are the next work, sort of as Clint said. But we will also look at that vision and mission. I know that was mentioned in public comment today. So that is part of the strategic plan and being reviewed during this forum and time to, through that large group. I was just going to summarize two things I thought were really important. One, those special education numbers. We're around 18% of students being served on an I A P in the Brookings District. And that's just something for us to really consider as we talk about our spaces and everything that we're doing in our budget. It's just that that's a number. And then I had asked Dr. Willert for the number of, the lunch account number that I think we're circling around $10,000, just so the public is aware. I think $9,000 something. I'm sorry, I didn't pull that up, but around-
I can share that real quick with you.
Just thought that was something to know around those of, it was in the Kellaland story, I think, from Sioux Falls District. So we were around that $10,000 mark of lunch bills not paid right now.
As of, as-
So people know as we go into the holiday season.
Yeah, so a specific number that we have, the most recent number that was reported to me by our Director of Child Nutrition Services is $9,660.84. So 9660.84.
Okay, thank you for sharing. All right. Okay, oh, shoot, sorry. Jason loves when I get really click happy up here. Sorry, Jason. All right, we're going to go ahead and have the presentation of the Bobcat Tracks Plan. This is just something that we have to go through. So go ahead, Clint.
Yeah, so board members, we just have to afford the opportunity to comment on anything with our Bobcat Tracks Plan. I am required to submit an assurance to the state that we have provided this opportunity to our public. And we will follow up accordingly. Once the meeting is finished, we'll do that later on this week. But this is something that every six months we are required to do as a point of discussion.
I have a couple of comments, if I could.
Yep, and this is just no action tonight, just an item.
No, no, I'm just, on page, on page four, it mentions places you can go to get a vaccine, and Brothers Pharmacy is on there, and Brothers Pharmacy is closed. And the other thing, it mentions that you can get test kits from the Department of Health, and I think that has been discontinued as of September. And then just that within our schools, if we have test kits, to be sure, we check the dates that they're not outdated. Yeah, because a lot of them are starting to expire. So those were just a few things that I saw that I had a question on. And then I just have one other question is on page eight, it talks about moving from phase to phase. There's a decision-making tree, and I've just never seen that. So I was just wondering where is-
We had that too, but-
Decision-making tree, it's not in this plan.
In the booklet, yep.
It's in a different booklet?
I think we had that graphic like two years ago. I can't remember. We might just need to have the team, Clint, do a real once-over and just make sure that everything in here is up to date and that we've gone through dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's and make sure it's up to date information.
Those were the things I saw when I went through to review.
And I'm guessing that this should-
And I'm guessing that this should be our last...
Two more years.
Two more years?
Junior.
Okay, I wasn't sure because of the 2023 for Esser.
Okay. Yep. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, if that's okay with everybody? Okay, I'm looking for a motion of approval of the consent agenda.
I saw move.
Right, moved by Deb.
Second.
Seconded by Terry. Any questions? Brian, we're ready for the vote. Am I on the wrong page? Oh, no, I think I got it. Board members, we're moving to action, so get ready to click. All right. Good? Brian? I don't have it. Got nothing. I have something. Thank you. Not click happy. All right. Okay, looking for a motion of approval of donated items?
I make a motion to approve the donated items.
Okay, moved by Teresa, seconded by Wes.
And I'd just like to say, I think there's so much support in this community that I would like to just, I don't know if it's appropriate to mention those people who donate. So on the list this year, it's 3M, Don and Linda Crowe, the Child's Book Council, Teri Demming, Rebecca Rounds, Outdoor Design and Landscape, the VFW Auxiliary, and also an anonymous donor. And I just, I think that we should take the time to mention those and thank them for their donations.
And that's above and beyond donations that are made to the foundation, correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
All right, moved by Teresa, seconded by Wes. Brian, we're ready for the vote. Looking for a motion of approval of the seniority list.
I move approval of the seniority list.
Moved by Deb, seconded by Wes. Any discussion?
I just have a question. When this is made, is it made in conjunction with BEA? Or does it just come from the district office? Or where does the list come from?
It comes from the district office. I believe once they see this, if they believe there's an error, they'll just contact us. If there is, we'll fix it. If not, it'll stay as is.
Thank you.
Part of the master agreement to run this through in December.
Yep. We're ready for the vote, Brian. I'm looking for a motion of approval of the Coordination Agreement, MOU, between the Brookings School District and the ICAP Head Start Pre-Birth to Five Program.
I move.
Seconded. Moved by Wes, seconded by Terry. Any discussion? Brian, we're ready for the vote. I'm looking for a motion of approval to add a middle school assistant wrestling coach to the 2022-2023 Master Agreement extra duty schedule.
I move approval of the addition of a middle school assistant wrestling coach.
Seconded.
Moved by Deb, seconded by Terry. Any discussion, board members? Seemed pretty clear. Yep.
Yeah, this is really about safety reasons. When you look at those numbers and the supervision and just the overall safety, particularly when you're dealing with a large number of learners that this is maybe their first experience with wrestling.
The only question I had, Dr. Willert, is there someone that we have in mind that's willing to serve in this capacity that we currently have on staff?
There are some individuals that have been volunteering, so there could be somebody to slide in potentially really quickly.
Motion passes. I'm looking for a motion of approval to add an assistant oral interpretation coach to the 2022-2023 Master Agreement extra duty schedule.
I'm motion to add an assistant oral intercoach.
Great, I'll second that. Motion by Teresa, seconded by Kelly.
This really comes down to, as you see in the rationale and the summary, the number of participants that we have and ensuring that they have the support necessary for the research, writing, and presentation work that's going on. So Mr. Jewett proposed this, and I do present this as a recommendation.
And I also think earlier, we talked about getting every child or every learner to have a spot, a niche in the school. And so I really appreciate that we're making this motion.
Thank you. We're ready for the vote. All right, I am looking for a motion of approval of the Health and Dental Insurance Holiday for employees that have elected the district's health and dental insurance.
Now we'll comment, Terry.
I'm not done yet, though, but yeah. 1/12 of the annual employee premium share, and that would take place during the December payroll. So I'm looking for a motion of approval.
I second.
All right, moved by Deb and seconded by Terry. And I think we have some updates from that group, Insurance Committee.
Well, that was my first exciting insurance meeting, so...
She loved it.
Make sure we lean into the microphones, yeah.
That was my first exciting insurance meeting, so I was taking it all in.
Well, we had a healthy discussion.
Very.
About the reserves that we have. And it was determined from our discussion, based on what both teachers and board members felt, that we have a healthy enough reserve that we can do this. And I think the only thing we have to emphasize to our staff is that we can't count on this. We have been able to do this almost every year since I've been on the board for the last four years. And that's really a positive thing, especially at this time of year. But it is because our staff is doing such a good job with wellness. And I would just like to compliment the staff on that. And that's why the information that Dr. Willert presented earlier about the Sand Creek option, and then all the things they're doing with the run in the spring and all the things they're doing about wellness, has really made a difference in our use of funding. And it's led to a lot of reserves.
And good stewardship. I mean, they're being good stewards. And I think one of the teachers commented that this is kind of incentive then for them to keep going, that it's good incentive if they do this, it's kind of to keep, yeah, we're doing good, let's keep doing this.
Looks like the average savings for a staff member is around $339. So that's great to do in the month of December for everybody. And then the cost to the self-insurance fund is around $111,000 for health and $9,000 for dental.
I have a question. If an employee takes the health insurance, do they also have to take the dental or they can decide? Okay, and so when this says elected the district's health and dental insurance, do they, they don't have to be on both?
No.
Whatever they're on is what they get. Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to have that confirmed. Thank you.
All right, that was moved by Deb, seconded by Terry. Brian, we're ready for that vote. The motion passes. All right. We are, I'm looking for a motion to establish the sub guaranteed maximum price for the precast concrete for the Medery Elementary Project with Hausmann Construction and Clark Drew Construction.
Well, I went through this, and the numbers add up. It does make sense. So I'll move approval.
Okay. Moved by Wes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Teresa. Any additional discussion, board members?
And the agreements were vetted through legal counsel just to ensure that everything was where it needed to be. And I know that we worked very closely on both of these with Clark Drew and Hausmann to make certain that they met our expectations. So again, it's with recommendation to do pass.
Right.
Spending $2 million.
It's all attached.
And that amount, and that amount, the $2,000, $1,212, will be published in the minutes
as well as part of the GMP.
Okay. All right, Brian, we're ready. Great, motion passes. Hey, fastest one tonight. All right, I'm looking for a motion of approval to establish the sub guaranteed maximum price for the precast concrete for the Hillcrest Elementary Project with Hausmann Construction and Clark Drew. Want to do it again, Wes? Okay. Moved by Wes.
Wait, second?
No.
Second.
Seconded by Terry. And you'll see this as we continue, the projects being split out like this. So just you can get used to this type of cadence for the projects.
And the dollar amount of this project's $1,939,431.
Okay, moved by Wes, seconded by Terry. Any additional discussion? Okay, Brian, we're ready for the vote. Motion passes. Great, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Wes.
I second.
Seconded by Deb. Everybody drive safely, please. Yep. Thank you. Yeah, I think so. Thank you, everyone, for coming.